Good evening, everyone. If you can hear my voice, please give me a thumbs up. Bravo. Thank you, one and all. Welcome to the Board of Alderman Meeting for the City of Town and Country, Monday, November 9th, 2020. If you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag, the United States of America.
The flag.
The Republic, where which it stands, one nation.
Which it stands, one nation, under God, indivi-
And justice.
And justice.
Thank you, everyone. Again, welcome. The meeting is hereby called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Bennigas?
Here.
Alderman Frauci?
Here.
Alderman Holman?
Here.
Alderman Hughes?
Here.
Alderman Mortland?
Here.
Alderman Weiseham?
Here.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Here.
Mayor Dalton is presiding, and we do have a quorum via video conference.
Thank you very much. Again, welcome, everyone. We are on the topic of minutes from our meeting of October 26. They've been previously distributed to and reviewed by the board. I'll now entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
So moved.
Hughes moved approval. Alderman Mortland seconded. Thank you, sir. Discussion. Seeing none. They will stand approved as written and distributed. We're on the topic of hearing from citizens. Even in a COVID pandemic environment, we still have the opportunity to hear from our citizens that are interested in matters in Town and Country. This is that opportunity. Madam Clerk, do we have any expressions of interest?
Not at this particular agenda item. I do have quite a few to enter, but I'll do that at the specific agenda items.
Ma'am, if I run over those opportunities, then please redirect. We have no public hearings this evening. We are on the topic of, I mean, I'm sorry, appointments. Two weeks ago, consistent with my standard practice, I announced my intent to seek your approval for the appointment of Alderman Mayland, a former Alderman, Mayland Smith, to the Planning and Zoning Commission. For as long as I've been around, Alderman Mayland Smith served this city and the Planning and Zoning Commission with distinction as its Aldermanic liaison. I endorse him fully. Is he on the, I'm looking for him. I'm getting indication from Ms. Cupford that he is in our waiting room. And also, I'll tell you a story. When I was, consistent with my obligations as mayor of the city many, many years ago, and Alderman Bennigas will remember this, I was brought forth an appointment to a completely unrelated position. And the then-members of the Board of Alderman said, "Look, we need time to consider these appointments. And in fairness and in service to our constituents and in ultimate service to the city, we just need time to be, to consider these appointments. We need the information and we need to advance notice of your intent, Mayor." And I thought about that, and I agreed. That is the right way to do business. So from that point forward, I never advanced another appointment in 16 years without affording the Board of Alderman the opportunity to understand my appointment, to reason for my appointment, and to consider it thoroughly. The person that brought that to my attention was then Alderman Mayland Smith. He was very disappointed in me and my approach to the appointment process. And we both made an agreement with one another at that point in time. It was in my back office at City Hall. And he said, "You know what, Mayor? I'll make a deal with you. I may disappoint you, but I will never surprise you." And I listened to those words, and I respected those words, and I thought, "That's the right way to conduct yourself in office in local government." And I, two weeks ago, announced my intent to seek the Board's support for Alderman Mayland Smith to serve as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. This is probably one of the most important jobs in all of local government, because it deals with the nature and character of our community. One we're committed to, one we express in our comprehensive plan, and one we defend zealously. Former Alderman Mayland Smith has done that job, and I thank him for it. He has disappointed me on any number of occasions, but he has never surprised me, because he is communicative, he is clear-thinking, he's respectful, and he's honest. And for that reason, tonight, I'm seeking the Board's support for this appointment. Since my announcement, as I mentioned during our work session, only Alderman Frauci has reached out to me. No one else did. I made the assumption from that that people were okay with my intention. Alderman Frauci expressed some significant reservations, and I respect her for it. She was honest, she was straightforward, and she was specific. And again, I appreciate that approach. Other than that, I have spoken to other Members of the Board, and they have indicated their support for the appointment. However this goes this evening, and it is the Board's decision from this point forward, I am fine with that. My comments this evening are with respect to process. And we, as local public officials, owe one another that degree of respect and collaboration. And with that, I would entertain a motion now to approve my nomination of Fred Mayland Smith to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Alderman Bennigas moves approval, seconded by Alderman Allen. Floor, consistent with our, yeah, thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go to the interview process now. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? Or do I need to withdraw that motion and have him be interviewed before?
No, I think that's totally fine. And in fact, since I have your guys' attention, I'll go ahead and enter a letter of support from the Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, Rob Seema. That was received and sent today, so I'll attach that to the minutes, and I think this order is perfectly fine.
Madam Clerk, would you read that letter in case anybody else has not had that opportunity?
The letter is dated November 8th, 2020, and it states, "Dear Alderman and Mayor Dalton, I'm writing today to express my support for Fred Mayland Smith's appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I had the pleasure of serving on the Commission for several years with Fred when he was our Aldermanic liaison. In his time on the Commission, I found Fred to be very thoughtful. He always worked to understand the issues that came before the Commission from all sides. It was clear in our meetings that he was well-prepared and ready to engage in a discussion on behalf of our residents. His attendance and commitment were excellent. Because of his experience with the Commission and his time as an Alderman, he already understands many of the relevant ordinances. Perhaps more importantly, he understands the nuances of balancing our desire in Town and Country for a vibrant community, excellent natural amenities, and quiet peaceful neighborhoods, a balance that is not always simple to achieve. I would welcome the opportunity to serve again with Mr. Mayland Smith and urge you to approve his appointment. Sincerely, Rob Seema."
Thank you, ma'am. Now, consistent with our ordinances prior to discussion by the Board, which we will do on the motion that's before us, I welcome former Alderman Mayland Smith to our meeting this evening, and note that he is here by video conference, making himself available for inquiry by the Board. The floor is open. Alderman Frauci.
Hi, good evening. You know, I really appreciate your continued willingness to serve in a role in our city. As you know, the role of an Alderman is very different than a role of a Commissioner, even on the Planning and Zoning Commission. For me, as the ward two representative, obviously, when you're elected as an Alderman, you are elected by the people and by their choice. As an Alderman voting for a Commissioner, I get the vote, but my voice is that of the people of my ward. And in this particular case, I've heard from a number of residents in my ward, and actually some from other wards, who've expressed a lot of concern about having you come back and serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So as a representative of those folks, I am not able to support your appointment to this Commission at this time. And I had a very long conversation, as Mayor Dalton explained earlier, with a number of reservations. And I don't know that there's a necessity to get into all of those reservations via the meeting, because at the end of the day, I'm going to vote the will of the residents who've reached out to me.
Thank you, Alderman. Do you have an inquiry for Mr. Mayland Smith, or are you just making a statement, ma'am?
No, I just wanted to make a statement so that my vote was clear.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Further inquiry of Alderman, former Alderman Mayland Smith. Further comment. Seeing none. Mr. Mayland, oh, Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayland Smith, it's good to see you again.
And the same.
And thank you. I would just like to follow up with the point that Alderman Frauci made with you being able to comment on your recognition of the prior role and then this current role that you're seeking now. Would you want to speak to that?
Well, I will certainly attempt to do that. First of all, I'll respond to Alderman Frauci and say that it's imperative for each Alderman to pay close attention to the input and the advice of their constituents. If there has been some reservation expressed about my appointment, I would be very welcoming to understand the details, and perhaps an offline or separate conversation would be beneficial to understanding what those concerns are, with the intent of using that information to further contribute to my performance and service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Alderman Allen, to your question, as I interpret it, I've been a resident of Town and Country for 35 years, and I continue to treasure my residence here. I chose this community intentionally, and I've never regretted that decision. I think it's a wonderful place to live and certainly to have raised my family. I look to 14 years of service on the Planning, excuse me, 16 years of service on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then 14 years on the Board of Alderman as a resource that I would intend to draw upon should I be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will tell you that I have spent substantial time reviewing the comprehensive plan document. I think it's a quality product. I've had the opportunity to participate in the construction of two of the comprehensive plans for our city. I think that this product, under the leadership of Chairman Seema and Commissioner Kuchin and Commissioner Mueller, is indeed a high-quality product. I'm particularly appreciative of the four focused areas that are shown in Section 2, and also with the detail in Section 3 that I believe was not present in the prior edition. So I look to my years of service and my study of the comprehensive plan as two key elements in assisting me should I return to planning and zoning. I hope that that answers your question satisfactorily.
Thank you.
Further inquiry of former Alderman Mayland Smith. Further inquiry. Seeing none. Mr. Mayland Smith, you have been let off easy this evening.
Well, Mayor, first, I'd like to say thank you very much. I'm deeply honored by the nomination. Those 14 years that we served together are a bright spot in my life, and I very much appreciate the contributions that you've made to the city. I know all of these people fairly well, some better than others, and so I'm not an unknown quantity.
No, sir, you're not. And that is why you're before us today. This is, as I began my remarks, I will conclude them, and that is, this is everything good about local government. This is why, this is how we protect and preserve our communities the way we love them. If Town and Country is not the place for you, there are other options, maybe more fitting for particular desires. We love this place, and it is my intent to put people on the Planning and Zoning Commission that preserve and protect the nature and character of our community, and I believe you would do that.
Thank you.
Please call the-
Mayor, if I could, a thought.
Alderman Mayland Smith, please let me recognize Alderman Bennigas first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a specific question for Mr. Mayland Smith, but I do want to speak to his capability in this role in that I think everything that you've said about him and everything Mr. Seema said about him, I have witnessed over the 16 years of knowing him, he is consistently and always well-prepared. He's thorough, and even when we disagree, he's considered in his presentation and clear about what the differences are. He's disappointed me also, to the point of being quite frustrated, but again, I knew exactly where he stood and why he stood there, and I had to respect that, even though I disagreed. So that's a consistency about him, is that he's thorough and considered in his presentation of his position. One thing, maybe more than any other single thing, that Town and Country is in debt to Mr. Mayland Smith for, and that would be Town and Country crossings. Some of you may not know the history of that, not been involved in the development of that, but that was a very contentious process. And Mr. Mayland Smith took what was initially presented to the Board, which was a big-box store, an ugly, unsightly, big-box development was proposed. And he almost, single-handedly, I know there's other people involved in the process, but he almost, single-handedly, changed that into what it is today, and it would have to be over 100% of an improvement from what was initially considered. So Town and Country owes him a debt of gratitude singularly for that process and what he is able to accomplish without any heavy-handedness. That was pure negotiations on his part, and he was excellent at it. So I don't know if there is a better person in Town and Country to fill this role than Mr. Mayland Smith.
Alderman, that is a very fitting description. I was involved throughout that process, and let me tell you something. That lake would not be there. That lake that we enjoy on the front side of Town and Country Crossing would not be there but for Fred Mayland Smith. That sea of asphalt was changed dramatically. That project would have been almost 80 acres of commercial development, because you know why? Because that's what it was zoned for. It was downzoned to residential. And I'm criticized for everything. I get it. That comes with the territory. But turning that back community into a residential product was not just about adding that housing component to our community. It was about downzoning the nearly 80 acres of commercial ground to our community and turning it into 30 and 40 acres residential and commercial respectively. That was done under the leadership of Fred Mayland Smith, so your comments are very, very appropriate, and I appreciate them. Further discussion. Now, Alderman, I mean, Fred, you were seeking recognition for comment before I turn to Alderman Bennigas.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to reassure the Board that I understand the role and responsibility of a Commissioner on planning and zoning. That individual must, and I will, listen objectively, gather the information, listen to constituents, and weigh the facts to make a decision that is consistent with our ordinances and in the best interest of the city. And that's a pledge that I'll stand by.
Sounds like you want to be your own man.
Yes. I've made that recommendation to a number of my Board colleagues, both past and present, and I'll abide by it as well.
Thank you, sir. Further debate. Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Whitmire?
Hi.
Alderman Bennigas?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Frauci?
Nay.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Nay.
Alderman Weiseham?
Nay.
And Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
It carries five to three.
Thank you. Congratulations, sir. It's time to get to work. So I thank you for your willingness to continue this, your service to the city, and I look forward to you doing so.
Thank you.
We are on the topic. You can sign off unless you have some sort of odd desire to continue to watch this. But other than that, you're free to go, sir. We are on the topic of communications and reports. The floor is open. Alderman Frauci.
The Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting via Zoom on November 18th. As a reminder, that sign code ordinance will be on our agenda again, as well as the exterior residential lighting, so if anybody has any comments, please take a look at those and get them to me prior to the 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Further reports. Alderman Mortland.
Yes, I have two reports. The Fire and Task Force will be meeting this Thursday, November 12th, at 8:00 a.m. at Longview Park. And then, Mayor, for the second one, I'd like to recognize Chief Cavens to announce the new chaplain program, which I'm-
Thank you, Alderman. Chief, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Dalton, Board of Alderman, and Chairman Mortland. I notified the PFP Commission and the Board of Alderman last week that for the past several months, Sergeant Giacapelli has been organizing an effort to reinvigorate, reignite, reestablish our chaplain program. His efforts have far beyond succeeded my expectations. And on Monday, November 23rd, I'll be swarming in four chaplains from the Town and Country faith-based organizations as official chaplains to the Town and Country Police Department. The lead will be David Klotz from Kirk of the Hills. The remaining three chaplains will be Mike Kennison from Kirk of the Hills, Mike Dollard from West County Assembly of God, and Ben Sheldon from Covenant Presbyterian. We've got a very solid foundation. We've got a lot of plans for the future moving forward for this chaplain program to be very successful, not only within the agency, but within the community itself. So we really look forward to this program taking off.
Chief Cavens, bravo to you. That's-
It's a team effort.
I know, but there's leaders in teams. And thank you, Alderman Mortland, for your work in this as well. This is a big deal, and it's something very special to me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have to chime in and send my endorsement to Chief Cavens for this move. It's more than just a personal thing. My father was a chaplain in Wichita, Kansas, for most of my high school years, getting called out all time of the day and night for that service. And Chief Cavens, I think it's a wonderful program, and thanks for moving it forward.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Further reports. Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'd like to echo my thanks to the chief. This does speak to the character of Town and Country. Mayor, could I go ahead and speak, communicating to the Board about some recent, thank you, recent information? I'd just like to, and some of this is obviously repeating the mayor's thanks and appreciation for the work that's been done on our budget. Again, I want to thank Ms. Wrights, Mr. Shelton, and other city staff for the hard looks at our 20- and other city staff for the hard looks at our 2021 budget as we continue through the very unsettling time with COVID and all the, the connecting ramifications that we deal with every day. I, I want to reiterate the Ways and Means Commission commitment, the oversight of our budgeting, our process provides transparency on expenditures. We do have the financials, the budget, all on the website for anyone in our city or elsewhere to investigate. We have the checks and balances system. Certainly Pam and Bob do balance out, and they do check on one another with accounts and the expenditures. We do continue to tweak some of the reporting. We have ongoing improvement of the process, and I've seen that over the past three years. Sharing the budget information to the board was more frequent this past year, and, and again, I think we continue to move in the right direction. Within the budget development process this year, it's been clear that all of our directors recognize and demonstrate heightened awareness of minimizing spending, and they were working from the cuts implemented on the, in the second quarter in April, starting, which impacted our 2020 budget. And again, they, they were able to balance spending cuts with decreased revenues while continuing many of the services to city, that the city would provide our residents. So I want to thank our city staff for performing their jobs, both professionally and efficiently. And I think it's very important that we all recognize, we have a very low number of staff. We have individuals carrying very significant workloads, and they, they do it well. And again, these are tough times, and they've continued to step up to the plate. I'd just like to add that unfortunately, there have been recent public accusations against the city, and it, it really, many feel that it, it has appeared to blanket the staff and elected individuals, both current and previous individuals. The comments were, for the most part, innuendo with claims of wrongdoing without any specific facts. And, you know, in this time where we have internet, we have people saying this and that, and reports about anything, I think it's important, people just remember that just because someone says something, and in this case, a lot of the undercurrent isn't even specific, but just because there's innuendo, their accusations, doesn't mean there's anything to it, and it certainly doesn't mean that these are facts. But fortunately, we do continue to live in a great country where we have First Amendment rights that allow false claims, innuendo, and attacks. However, these comments do paint all in Town and Country and paint the city with a broad stroke, which I feel is very unfortunate. It's unfair, it's been disrespectful, especially during this very stressful time with COVID, with people having to come in, do their jobs part of the time, work from home, and just the uncertainty. So again, I just, I'm, I'm sorry for a lot of the uncomfortableness that, I guess that's a word, that the staff might be experiencing because of some of these comments, but I for one, support the staff wholly. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman, and thank you for your leadership. Your commission is a, is a very thoughtful and communicative body. They, they speak their mind, they give us advice, and then, as I said at the opening of our remarks, sometimes we follow their advice, sometimes we don't, but that's, that's the prerogative of the Board of Aldermen. That's how it's supposed to work. And so they talk openly and honestly and straightforwardly, and I for one, appreciate your service and leadership of that group. Further reports. Alderman Hughes.
The next meeting of the Arts and Culture Commission will be Wednesday, November the 11th, via Zoom, from 6:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, ma'am. Further reports. Alderman Whitmire.
Conservation Commission will meet, we, one week from today, on November 16th at noon.
Thank you. Alderman Weisehan was next, seeking recognition.
Thank you. The Parks and Trails Commission met a couple of weeks ago. We discussed the future grant and playground projects for 2021 and forward, as well as a great presentation from former Alderman Mange regarding the signs for the, from the Historical Society of the log cabins at Dres Park.
Terrific. He's very passionate about that, and I'm, thank you to you and your commission for engaging with him. He's got some great ideas, and would be well placed to consider them. Alderman Holman, were you seeking recognition?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Public Works Commission will meet on Monday, November 16th. We're meeting at 4:30 via Zoom. On our agenda, our code amendments that we'll look at, and this, we anticipate being the final meeting for the Public Works Commission in 2020. We'll meet again in January. That's my first announcement. And my second planned announcement is I just appreciate Alderman Allen's words that she shared with all of us. I appreciate staff, and as we all navigate through what's transpired over the last few months, it's been tasking, I think, on many, but probably not more so than staff. So thank you for acknowledging them, Alderman Allen, and I regret not doing so sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Further reports. Mr. Sheldon, are you next?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, all of you should have received a memorandum from Ms. Nixon regarding a, two wonderful donations. One from the Historical Society, as Alderman Weisehan had referenced, for signage at Dres Park. The other is from the Community Art and Culture, which is for sculpture to be located at Longview, where the Discovery statue previously was. I know Ms. Nixon is on this Zoom. If there are any questions, if there are not any questions or concern, per the code, we believe that we are prepared to accept those donations and move forward with both of those items.
Thank you. Well done. Alderman Whitmire, seeking recognition.
Mr. Mayor, I'd followed up with, to find out if, who was going to ensure that the sculpture that we're going to install, and if that is a material amount of money, I'm wondering if we figured that out.
So it's an excellent question, and we have inquired with our carrier. We do not know at this point if there would be any additional insurance cost, if there was an increase to the premium. I've talked to Ms. Nixon. We would bring that back to the board prior to moving forward. It's a good question.
Thank you. Appreciate the exchange. Alderman Benegas.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd like to ask that any, a new art that goes in any of the parks come before the board for discussion, consideration, and approval before it's placed?
I think that makes a lot of sense. Mr. Sheldon.
So if there is concern about this particular piece, and I know, Alderman Hughes, that it went through the Community Art Commission, but I think this would be the opportunity, not only the contribution, but if there is concern about the sculpture itself.
Alderman Benegas.
More, more specifically, Mayor, I, I, so yes, there can be discussion, but I believe that the, the synergy that comes from a group discussion is, is important. So I'd like for this to be an agenda item for consideration by the board before it's placed in the park.
Mr. Sheldon or Ms. Nixon, what do you think? Is that workable?
I'll defer to Ms. Nixon.
I mean, I appreciate the Alderman's concerns, and he wants, you know, just, the, the advanced discussion is, is, is the key. And what do you think? Is that workable?
It is workable. We are under some time consideration with the artist, who, if the city is not interested in the piece, would like to submit it in competitions, and is sort of waiting for the board to make a decision. So certainly, there would be an opportunity for the board to discuss it, but if, if that's the will of the board, I would hope that that could be at the next meeting, just so that if the city would, wants the piece, we don't lose it to another competition.
Alderman Frouchy.
I think I'm off mute. So the only question I have is, when we were working on the commission restructuring, one of the things that we did with Community Art and Culture as a board was discussed and put into, to code, the desire to have a master art plan. And Alderman Benegas, I may be wrong, but I think you were one of the people who sort of brought that up, and I, I loved that idea. So I think I'm giving the right person credit, although I might not be. But that master plan was to discuss and then bring to the board a plan of where in our parks we would put things, so that we could ensure that locations were, you know, discussed amongst everywhere, everybody on the board, and to ensure that that master plan was being followed, the same way we do with our Master Trails Plan and, and other items that, that we, you know, deem to be kind of city assets. So I'm just wondering if that master plan has, has started to, to come to life, and whether or not this piece of art fits within the master plan as we, you know, develop it.
Okay, so, so this is a good discussion. I'm going to ask Mr. Sheldon and Ms. Nixon to, to reach out to those interested and work out something, because, you know, the, the points are good ones, but, but we also don't want to put in a process that, that forecloses certain opportunities for the city. So early exchanges, clear communications, all of those things are good. We've just got to make sure that we are doing it in a way that, that doesn't foreclose opportunities. Further reports. Alderman Benegas.
And what is the procedure for an art, a piece of art to be placed in one of our parks? And in my 16 years, all the art has come before the Board of Aldermen for consideration and discussion. And so I don't know if that's by ordinance, or that was just by willingness of the, I don't know how it had happened exactly, but I think it's a good procedure, and like to see it continued. I hesitate, I hesitate to give any commission the power to enact their choice without being part of consideration by the Board of Aldermen also.
Yeah, I, I, as I said, I agree with, with your, the policy and the, the objective, but it, it is so far out of my skill set that I need to defer to our administration. And I suspect tomorrow, you will hear from Ms. Nixon as to how this will be handled, and in a way that, that affords full opportunity of the board to offer their opinions. It just will unlikely have mine, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Does that make sense, everybody? I mean, it, it's, he's, he's raising a very good point, and this is, and it's personal. And I know Alderman Hughes probably has some feelings on the subject, but it, it is something that is not set by ordinance, but rather by respect and practice of the board. And so our, our commitment to, just like we were talking about with the Planning and Zoning Commission appointment, our commitment to early and ongoing and clear communications will afford everybody the opportunity to weigh in on things that matter to them. And that's how we should do business. I'm going to move on, if that's okay. Seeing no further report. Mr. Sheldon, are you done, sir? Did you, okay. We are now on the topic of unfinished business. It's bill number 20-51, co-sponsored by Alderman Allen, Benegas, Frouchy, Holman, Hughes, Mortland, and Whitmire. The, the record has reflected Alderman Weisehan's recusal on this matter, and without objection, would the city clerk please read that bill for the second?
Bill number 2051 is an ordinance amending Title IV, Chapter 405, zoning regulations of the Town and Country Municipal Code by the amendment of Article 14, Planned Residential Community Regulations, and Article 23, Special Zoning Districts.
Thank you. Alderman entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Frouchy moves approval. Does it gain a second?
Second.
Alderman Holman seconds that motion that matters before the body. Alderman Frouchy seeking recognition for, to offer a substitute. Ma'am, you recognized that purpose. Please explain your substitute.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'd like to offer a substitute bill, 2051. This substitute includes thoughts both by Alderman Whitmire and myself. Essentially, our bill that came out of Planning and Zoning included a number of references to the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan is a document not voted on by the Board of Aldermen, and therefore the thought was to bring it back more into the zoning world of the Board of Aldermen by removing the, the districts that are in the Comprehensive Plan, and instead replacing them with the zoning classifications that are under the jurisdiction of the Board of Aldermen. We did consult with our city attorney, who agreed that the, the Comprehensive Plan cannot be the basis of zoning changes. It's a part of the discussion, but that only the Board of Aldermen has the, the opportunity to make those changes. By basing the document specifically on Comprehensive Plan, any future changes that the Planning and Zoning Commission makes to that document would then alter our zoning code, which again, can only be altered by the, the Board of Aldermen. We did include a map as well regarding the residential exception, so that you could see under that new zoning classification, rather than districting, which, which parcels would be affected by the residential exception for a PNRD. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to, to help with that once this moves forward.
Alderman Frouchy, do you move approval of your substitute?
I do.
Thank you. Does that motion gain a second?
So moved.
Alderman Whitmire, thank you. The matters, the substitutes before the body, discussion. All the opinion, the motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Further debate on the bill as substituted. Seeing none. Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hold on. Alderman Whitmire seeking recognition.
Just very quickly, want to thank Alderman Frouchy for working through this. This is a very important and delicate matter whenever we put our fingers into this code, especially this code, because of how powerful it is. These districts that we're, we're approving are very special, and we need to pay careful attention to them going forward, even with these changes.
Thank you, and thank you for your involvement in the process, Alderman Whitmire. Further discussion. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yes, I'm sorry. Please call the roll on the bill as substituted.
Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Benegas?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Frouchy?
Aye.
And Alderman Allen?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously as substituted and becomes ordinance number 4393.
Thank you. Well done, everyone. We are on item number two. It's bill number 20-54. It's sponsored by Alderman Frouchy. Without objection, would the city clerk please read that bill for the second time?
Bill number 20-54 is an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 205, Animal Regulations, and Title IV, Chapter 405, Zoning Regulations of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically by the enactment of Section 205.120 and the amendment. by the enactment of Section 205.120 and the amendment of Section 405.370 and Section 405.470 regarding standards for the keeping of chicken hens.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if you will, I would go ahead and enter some comments.
Before I get a motion in a second, let's get those comments in the record, please.
Okay. I will be entering 35 emails into the record regarding this item. All of those were received over this weekend and today by the Board of Alderman, so they've been previously distributed and they'll be attached to tonight's minutes.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the bill.
So moved.
Alderman Trauci moves approval. Does that gain a second?
Second.
Alderman Hughes seconds the motion. The bill's before the body, discussion. Alderman Holman.
It's now the appropriate time to bring up my amendment?
Yes, ma'am. You recognize for that purpose.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have an amendment to the bill in Section D, number eight. The floors of every chicken coop shall be a minimum of one foot off the ground, smooth, tight, maintained, so as to prevent accumulation of filth or water or harboring of vermin thereunder.
Thank you. Sounds like a good amendment. Does that gain a second?
Second.
Alderman Trauci seconds the amendment. Discussion regarding Alderman Holman's amendment. Seeing none. All the opinion, that amendment, that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, the ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Further debate on the bill as amended. Seeing none.
I have a question. Is it appropriate to ask Mr. Spencer a question at this point in time regarding language on the bill?
Yes, ma'am. Direct it through me, please, and I'll call upon the sponsor.
Okay. I have a question regarding electrical heat lamps and would like to ask staff if they can speak further to that.
So you, Mr. Shelton, Ms. Nixon, who would like to take the heat lamp inquiry?
So I will defer to Mr. Spencer, but it would need to meet if they're going to be electrical, that would need to meet electrical code, I would imagine. Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Spencer, you are off mute. Do you have comments on that, sir? And then Mr. Garrett may weigh in after you.
Mr. Shelton, I took the words out of my mouth. I would defer to the electrical code and what that would dictate for the installation of heat lamps and electricity.
So my question is, does language need added to this, or are we fine?
That's counsel. Do you want to comment on your experience regarding the electrical issues that are being raised with respect to the heat lamps on chicken coops?
Well, I know nothing about heat lamps on chicken coops. I know a little bit about electricity and a little more about the codes. I don't know if putting in a heat lamp is going to require an electrician or electrical code inspection. I guess it depends on the heat lamp and, but obviously, any kind of electrical feed to a chicken coop is going to require some type of, I would believe, some type of permit. And it would have an electrical permit. But I'm not, I can't tell you that I'm absolutely certain about what, you know, that you can't plug in a, you know, a heat lamp for one of these things in a normal circuit. But if the chicken coop has to be wired, then it's going to require an electrician and a permit.
So I don't know if this language should be further researched. I just came across this today, so I'm sorry I'm bringing it up at the 11th hour. But with the setback, you know, I think it's 10 feet from the back of your house and 60 feet from the rear property line. And with our four seasons, I'm assuming there needs to be some type of heat in there from the little research that I have done. So maybe it's worth continuing this.
Yeah, I, we've been debating chickens for about 10 years in this town. It has been, has received more critical analysis than a lot of issues that come before the board. So I don't feel any pressing need to advance this, other than that it has come before planning and zoning and that Alderman Trauci is interested in moving it along. But I'm sure she is interested in moving it along correctly and not bringing legislation back to amend what we've done tonight. So if you want, Alderman Holman, if you want to make a motion to continue this and you can work with the bill sponsor, I'm fine.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask staff for electrical permitting, would that need to actually be in this language? Would that not come when they applied for a building permit, showed electrical work, and then they would get a permit that included that? After all, you can build a shed, but if you want to shed with electricity, you get a permit to go with it. So I'm just curious as to whether or not that language actually needs to be in this bill, or if that actually just is under our building codes, which comes up when you apply for your permit.
Very fair point. Very fair point. Mr. Garrett, can you speak to that issue, sir?
When a permit is requested, I would assume that any electrical is going to be reviewed by the permit or plan examiner. And if an electrical permit has to be pulled, then that would have to happen. I'm looking right now for, I was looking in the ordinance as to where the, the part is it deals with the, with the electrical or with the heat lamp.
But I think Alderman Trauci's point's a good one. And she's saying that, look, if you bring a conditional use permit for a chicken coop and you decide you don't need or don't want electrical elements to it, then that is a separate consideration. If you decide you do, then that is, that needs to be reviewed under our, under our ordinances that govern those matters. I don't have a strong feeling on it. Alderman Trauci.
Additionally, I believe our electrical permits go through St. Louis County. So I would imagine, just like any other secondary structure on a property, that accessory structure would also be reviewed by our Public Works Department for any, you know, plumbing needs or electricity and those types of things, then are sent over to county if they need that type of service. But I'm not sure that it needs to be in here. For instance, for other accessory structures, we don't have it in the accessory structure language. We instead have it within our building code, which makes sense to me that this would also be located in that area. Anytime anybody applies for anything with electricity, it goes under that building code and comes out through the building permit process.
I think Alderman Holman's point was just integrating these two. I don't think she's suggesting that there was any separate analysis or any unique analysis, but rather that, that it is all integrated. But Mr. Spencer, do you, do you have some feelings on the subject, sir?
I would agree with Alderman Trauci that the permitting process is sufficient to cover these kinds of scenarios. And like she mentioned, electrical inspections are performed by the county and inspected by the county. So I think that's, I think she makes some fair points.
Alderman Holman, is it, is this covered to your satisfaction? And we could do cleanup legislation if in fact we found some gaps? Or do you want?
It is. And I was just curious and concerned about the fire hazard. But yes, so I was curious for everyone's input and I'm satisfied if everyone's satisfied and ready to move on this.
Yep. Good discussion. Very good discussion. Further debate. See, Alderman Whitmire.
As the new guy on the block, I have never seen an outpouring of sentiments like this, ever. Both pro and con, supporting, dissenting. You know, I'm not going to try and count those ballots that, you know, those folks have a right to express their opinions and I'm glad they did. I guess I do speak in favor of this motion. And I'm sure there's some folks that have written to me that are lamenting that right now. But, you know, we do have chicken coops in the city today. This provides a vehicle to regulate those chicken coops, make sure that those animals are well taken care of and the neighborhoods are protected. You know, I think that probably the most important part of this is that to get a coop, you have to have a CUP, a conditional use permit. We have to make sure that we manage this process, that just because somebody applies, they don't necessarily get it. So they apply for a coop in a place that does not make sense for one to be located because of its proximity to smaller homes or smaller lots. We need to be the ones managing that and make sure that those things don't happen. And then lastly, I would say that the legislation does limit the number of properties upon which these things can be placed. And it gives us an opportunity to walk into this water slowly.
Alderman Whitmire, I could not agree with your remarks more. That is well said. It is, tell us what the rules are so we can all play by the rules and we understand them so that when we are considering doing things on our property in Town and Country, we know what to expect. And this is good, this is good government. Whether or not there will ever be chickens on my property is probably an open question. But clarity in land use regulations is paramount. And I appreciate your remarks. Further debate. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the bill as amended.
Alderman Trauci?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Benegas?
Aye.
Sorry, sir. Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
The bill passes unanimously as amended and becomes ordinance 4394.
Congratulations to the chicken hawks. We are on item number three on our agenda. It's bill 20-55, co-sponsored by Alderman Holman and Alderman Trauci. Without objection, Mr. City Clerk, please read that bill for the second time.
Bill number 2055 is an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 210 of Fences of the Town and Country Municipal Code, specifically Section 210.780 regarding the hours of construction activities.
I want to, I'm going to go to Alderman Hughes. I want her to introduce her substitute and then I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this matter for two weeks' time with the substitute pending. So that is where we will begin our debate. Alderman Hughes.
I move to accept.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry. Do I, Madam Clerk, do I have a motion?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Holman.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Trauci. Alderman Hughes is recognized for the purposes of offering her substitute.
Okay. I basically moved to accept substitute bill number 20-55 for consideration.
Thank you.
And what the change that I made was is basically I'm proposing prohibit construction activities on Sundays.
And holidays, ma'am?
I believe holidays are reflected in there as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, the motion's been made. Does, the motion's been made and seconded on the Alderman Hughes substitute. I'll now recognize Alderman Holman for purposes of continuing this matter to the meeting of November 23rd.
So moved.
Does that gain a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Trauci. Discussion regarding the continuance motion. This is where we will pick up this matter after the board continues to work out those details. All in favor of the continuance motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We're on item, we're on new business. It's bill number 20-56, sponsored by the board as a whole. Without objection, Mr. City Clerk, please read that bill for the first time.
Bill number 2056 is an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute an amendment to the West County Dispatch Center, WCDC, participation agreement on behalf of the city of Town and Country.
Thank you. Bill 20-56 will be continued to the meeting of Monday, November 23rd for a second reading consideration. I'd remind the board, under the leadership of Alderman Mortland and Alderman Allen, please work with one another so that this is a very significant matter. I understand the plan here, but if you have concerns, please express them to those that are leading this effort so that we can bring a consensus opinion in two weeks' time. We're on item number five. It's the approval of a purchase order to Ed Rohr Safety Products for 16 ballistic vests in the amount of 60, I'm sorry, $12,464.0. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Mortland.
Second.
Approved, seconded by Alderman Trauci. Discussion. Alderman Whitmire.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering if these, if our old vests have any disposal value or if we were going to donate them to another municipality or what happens there?
Great, great question. Chief Cavens, you're recognized to respond.
Thank you, Mayor. Great question, Alderman Whitmire. Our plans are normally, because of the quote unquote shelf life of them, other agencies don't take them as a donation because of their liability risk. But what we use them for is training purposes on the range, as well as we're going to get, probably utilize them for protection of the chaplains when they ride along with us. They're not going to be out and about engaging the public as much as our officers are, but they would be in the car and we may surplus them for the use by the chaplains.
Satisfactory response, Alderman?
Yes, thank you.
Further.
You're welcome.
Seeing none. All the opinion, the motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We are on item number six. It's the Claymark Conditional Use Permit, pardon me, by news of fact, they've been distributed to and considered by the board. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Trauci moves approval. Does that gain a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Holman. Discussion. Seeing none. All the opinion, that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
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 Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Oh, Madam Clerk.
I'm so sorry. Maybe Mr. Garrett can just ensure that that voice vote is sufficient, or do we need a roll call vote on that, given the legal nature?
I have it on a voice vote, but I defer to counsel.
Either way.
Sir, you're on mute. Still.
Voice vote is fine.
Thank you.
All of the opinion, that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. We're on our warrant list. It's item number seven on our agenda in the amount of $272,081.51. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Alderman Allen moves approval. Does that gain a second?
Second.
Does by Alderman Mortland. Discussion regarding the warrant list. Alderman Whitmire.
Mr. Mayor, it was pointed out that we're replacing the sign at Mason Ridge and Clayton Road after it was hit by a car. And it was pointed out that we recovered a lot of that money from the driver to help pay for that, that sign. I was just wondering, you know, using that as a point of information, what, seeing city property being damaged, how should our citizens, what should our citizens do if they see city property being damaged to help us recover? In this case, that person stepped forward or somehow we knew. But if it's late at night and you see something happen, somebody drives through a sign or whatever, what should one do?
I think that's an excellent question. And I'm going to ask Chief Cavens to comment on it. I'm sure he's got a policy out there about being a good and noisy neighbor.
See something, say something. To put it very, to put it very bluntly and very simple, Alderman Whitmire, it doesn't make any difference whether it's our property or somebody else's property. If they see property being damaged, in this situation, it was a leaving the scene of an accident. If I recall correctly, and Mr. Shelton could help me out. If I recall correctly, and Mr. Shelton could help me out, I believe that we had two of them that we investigated, we exhausted a lot of staff hours on the police side investigating. It was either this one or the one at Clayton and Bales. But either way, just encourage people, it's very simple. If you see something suspicious, call 911. We'll evaluate it, no matter whether it's our property or a citizen's property, just call the police.
Well said.
Thank you.
Good inquiry, Alderman, and appreciate the response, chief. Yeah, and congratulate people for being good neighbors. You know, people get, well, I'm not sure what I saw, and I'm worried that I might be, no, it's fine. We receive information with the intent that it's offered, and that is with the best interests of our community in mind, and so I appreciate that, and people should take comfort in knowing that they're calling their community and contributing to the best interests of us all. Further discussion. Seeing none, all the opinion that motion should prevail. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of the contrary opinion, nay. The ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Bill moved.
I have a other.
Alderman Holman seeking recognition.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a quick question under other, something transpired today, so I just would like clarification. When the city initiates a poll or survey and residents email in their response, and we don't include language that states that it is, becomes public information, do we have the right and ability to publish their responses, their names, and their emails, and their addresses without notification? Is that a given?
Also, do you want to speak to that?
Normally, in my experience, when we have done that, we've advised people that it may be subject to the sunshine law and may have to be disclosed. I'm not sure specifically what you're referring to, but whenever we're seeking input from residents, if, if it's something that is sunshineable, and something like that would be, oftentimes what we'll tell them is, keep in mind that, you know, your response may be, may have to be disclosed if a request is made for that information, because it is public information.
Okay. And I hate to bring up the word chickens, but it was with regard to chickens, our city conducted a survey in 2019, and we had, I think, a little bit under 20 residents respond back directly to our city administrator, and then today, that information was made public record, and so I was curious that that was published, and I just wanted to understand if we need to put a disclaimer in there going forward or not, or a notification that we, this will, if you respond to this survey, then it becomes public information, just so the resident has that information? And that information was not included in the survey?
So that's, that's a very good question. It crosses both legal and policy considerations. Counsel and Mr. Shelton, do you have comments on that in terms of encouraging citizen engagement, but having them do so with the full understanding as to the public nature of their responses?
I would just say, Mayor, that as far as I'm concerned, the staff will take every effort to inform residents in any survey or request for feedback going forward, that this may become public per our city attorney's recommendation. I think it's good.
Thank you.
Good point, very good. Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Bill moved.
Alderman Frauci moves. Does that gain? I'm sorry, I can't. Allen's, the motion's been made and seconded to close the meeting pursuant to Section 610.021, subpatents 1, 2, 3, 12, and 13 of the revised statutes of Missouri, to discuss legal actions, real estate, litigation, attorney-client privilege communications, and to discuss personnel matters. In this instance, the board will be considering real estate transactions, and with that, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Holman?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Benegas?
Aye.
Alderman Frauci?
Aye.
Alderman Mortland?
Aye.
And Alderman Whitmire?
Aye.
It carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. We're closing the public portion of our meeting. We're going into work to a closed session. You have that information. See you shortly. Thank you. We will not be returning to open meetings.